Educating, Informing, Serving. FEC TV, Keeping Government Honest.
To adopt the agenda as presented for today's afternoon meeting on the 14th of January.
So moved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
Okay. All right, Kim, you now take the lead. It's up to you.
Okay. At the close of today at four o'clock, by statute was the last day to the public to submit any petitions. And I've received no new petitions. So these are the articles that we have been working on, mainly Bill has been working on, that we compiled for the warning of our March 2nd, 2021 town meeting. Bill's got all of the articles here as we would like to see them, and they were suggested by Attorney Larry Slayson in the order that they should be. And I don't know if you've had a chance to go through them, but do you want to go through them one at a time and accept them in a whole after? Or what do you guys want to do? Do you have questions on them?
The only question I had is what do you want to do with that? There's a duplicate in there, was there?
So maybe we should go down like Article 1, and then I'll just touch base on each one to make sure everybody's okay with each article?
Yep.
Are you okay with that, Bill?
That's great, yeah.
Okay. So of course, all of these are going to be Australian ballot. So there will be a yes/no after them when the time comes for the actual ballot. So Article 1 is a formal one, just calling of the meeting. The polls are open from nine to seven. Article 2, shall the town receive and accept the auditor's report, which essentially is our town report and all that said in it. Article 3, shall the town authorize the select board to borrow money respectively if necessary? That's a formal one that we have. Article 4, and shall the town of Grafton raise $599,500 in authorized sum for the maintenance of highway and bridges? And that you will find was in our expenditure when we did the revenue and expenditure for the budget. I did have Hardy double-check those numbers along with Michelle. Article 5, shall the town of Grafton raise $227,813 and authorize that sum for the select board budget. And keep in mind that both those articles are minus what we're going to get in for revenue. So yes, it was like 715, I believe, for the highway, but we took off the 120 we're going to anticipate coming in for revenue, and same with the Slotman's budget. Oops, we got Article 5 again. That should actually be Article 6. You got that, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay. Shall the town raise the $9,000 for ambulance? That did not change, no new request. So this becomes Article 7, and shall the town raise $29,950 for the firefighters association operating expenses. That was including the little increase they asked for. Article 8, shall the town raise $3,000 for the rescue squad? They left that level. Article 9, shall the town approve expenditures of grant monies awarded for the purpose named in the grant for the fiscal year 2021-22? That again is another formality. This becomes Article...
10. 10.
10, yep. So this is where we had to switch things up instead of just having read off humanitarians and having a lump. We actually had to list each humanitarian in this article because it's become an Australian ballot. So keep in mind it's going to be a yes/no. So either they vote yes for the entire humanitarians, or they're going to vote no, there's no amending. Then Article 11, shall the town of Grafton raise $200,000 for the capital budget, and again, $15,000 for fire truck, $138,609 for highway equipment reserve, and $46,391 for bridge construction program. Article 12, shall the town of Grafton raise $1,000 for the support of the Grafton Community Church food pantry programs? And he has a note, did we want to specifically mention food pantry?
Hey, before you go any farther, I got Article 12 as the voters rescind Article 1.
This is the newest one. He just printed off at 3:58.
Okay.
That's the one that was a duplicate.
So you got a dupe there.
Oh, on the second page, on the next page? Okay, nevermind, yeah.
Okay. Didn't Mary...
Go ahead.
Feather made a comment of what she wanted to call it? Was that the food pantry? Is that what she... At the last meeting, she made a comment at the meeting of what it should be. Was that it? I don't remember exactly.
The church food pantry program?
Yeah, I don't know if that was what she... But she wanted something changed. You remember, Kathy?
I think...
It said there's community services. And now she said no, she didn't want it that general, she wanted it for the food pantry.
Okay.
Okay, that is what it says. It says church food pantry program.
Right.
Okay.
So that is that Article 12?
Yes.
Yeah, that becomes 12.
You can have the paragraph in front of it, it all goes away, and then we're going to 12.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Article 13, shall the town of Grafton raise $2,037 for the support of the community programs of the Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies, and that's in sections.
Now what article number was that now?
That would be Article 13.
13?
Yep.
Okay.
Then 14, shall the town of Grafton adopt the amendments to the town plan offered by the Planning Commission and approved December 21st, 2020 by the Select Board for adoption at this town meeting by Australian ballot?
So that's Article 14, correct?
That would be 14. So 15 follows, shall the voters of the town of Grafton rescind Article 1, which was adopted at a special town meeting on November 14th, 2019. Shall the voters of Grafton adopt or amend municipal plans by Australian ballot? And by so rescinding, return the authority to adopt a new town plan or amendments thereof to a majority of the members of the Select Board as set forth in 24 VSA 4385-C. So everybody's happy with that one?
Yeah, so they're going to have to explain that one at the meeting.
Yeah. Okay, so then we move to Article 16.
But hang on one second.
Yep.
Am I the only one? I might be somewhat confused, and maybe the people, and maybe it's just me. In Article 14, you're asking for them to approve the amended plan. And then in Article 15, you're talking about changing it again. Is that confusing?
Why is it in there?
Because you wanted it to go back to the Select, the authority to go back to the Select Board.
Rather than the town, than the way it is now where every time you have an amendment, you have to have an Australian ballot. If you don't do it, that's fine, but I just, I was wondering if, and maybe we're going to have to explain this when it goes into the paper, because it might be a little confusing to say, why are there two articles here? What does one mean? That's my only question.
Yeah. Let me say something. If those articles were in the original one, the other way around, which meant if you voted the one before the other, you would no longer be able to vote the other.
Oh, okay.
So that's why they're in that order.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, 16?
All right, 16, shall the voters of the town...
Can we wait to see one more thing, Kim?
Sure, yeah. Your meeting.
That wording to rescind was looked at carefully by Larry Slayson and accepted. He said, "I did it exactly the way it should be."
Okay. Go ahead, Kim.
Okay, then Article 16, shall the voters of the town of Grafton approve and ratify the withdrawal of the town of Westminster from the Wyndham Northeast Elementary Union School District, subject to certification of Westminster's January 5th, 2021 vote to withdraw. That needs correcting, Bill.
Correct.
So that wording actually came from Jack and the Supervisor Union. On Article 17, shall the town of Grafton pay its property taxes to the treasurer and quarterly installments with the due dates being August 15th, November 15th, February 15th, and May 15th? Again, this is going to be a yes/no, and I'm hoping that, talking with Joe, that maybe in the Grafton news, we could put something underneath each article saying, "This is a formality. This is traditional." In other words, please don't mark it yes or no, don't mark no on it. If they were, and they mark no on it because they don't want to pay their taxes, by statute, 30 days after the taxes are sent out in July, all taxes will be due if they do not vote for this quarterly. And then we go to 18, and shall the town of Grafton levy an interest charge on all delinquent taxes on real and personal property of 1% per month or a fraction thereof from the due date of each installment for the first three months, and 1.5% per month or a fraction thereof for every month thereafter, as provided for in 32 VSA 5136. Again, that's a traditional formal one. So some of your copies...
What would happen if they voted that down, just in curiosity? Then you couldn't charge an interest on delinquent taxes? Is that what that means?
Well, that's not even delinquent taxes, that's...
I mean, the issue...
That's not like payments.
Okay.
Yeah, 1% and 1.5% thereafter. Actually, now that you bring up the delinquents, shouldn't there, don't we usually vote on a delinquent tax? Article?
There's 13.
Let me get a town report, hold on. No, we don't, no, we don't.
However, it says that all delinquent taxes, delinquent taxes are a legal term, and taxes aren't delinquent until they're not paid at the end. Am I not correct?
Right, not until the end of the...
This should be on all late. We should check that before we print this.
Let me interest on all late tax information.
If you read through the policy on delinquent taxes, they make a distinction between late, which is the 1% a month, and delinquent, which is after a year, they are 8%.
And they too, though, yeah, I think that we've been carrying this on traditionally for years, because every one of them, every, our town report always says...
Yeah, and that's what I took out of it, but now that I think about it, we better check that.
Yeah, because it's exactly the same as last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And yeah, you're not delinquent, I mean, although you get the same charge, yeah, that might be something Bill wants to check on.
Well, if we check on this and we have to change it, does that require another meeting?
I would say so.
Or could we do that on Tuesday's meeting? But the deadline is today, right?
Well, the deadline for accepting them are, but approving is not.
Well, why don't we have Bill check with VLCT? And if that's not, if they're not one, then Larry Slayson, but I'd go to VLCT first and see, and then we can put that, we can talk about that at the Clerk's Report on Tuesday's meeting, verify that we're on the right track.
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think it would ever come up, but it is, it's a term, it's a legal term of art, so we need to get it right.
Okay.
Okay. The other question I have, the other question I have before you move on is, under 16, approve to ratify the withdrawal of the town of Westminster. Should there be anything in this thing that says about Athens and Grafton getting back?
No.
No, because we just, as a school district, have to allow them out. Athens does their own.
And then it just goes back to what it was?
This is the correct language that should be in there. It was provided by a lawyer and Jack Brier to both Athens and Grafton. They have their warning, and we have our warning.
And what happens is, once we allow, and say the state allows Westminster out after we both towns approve it, that leaves us and Athens alone, because we don't want to withdraw from the union just Grafton, and then just, because that, because everybody stands alone after that.
Okay.
So back to, some of you probably have some of the articles that has the delinquent tax collector articles in it, but they were highlighted to discuss it. And I know it was brought up a couple times, and we voted on this last year, and we thought maybe we'll bring it before the public again, to vote on whether or not we should either do away entirely with the delinquent tax collector, or should we make it an appointed position? Should we still give the 8% to the delinquent tax collector? Should the town take over the 8%? You know, there's a bunch of different scenarios. Originally, I was right on board, let's put this back through for a vote again, but given the circumstances and the COVID and the confusion of not even having a physical town meeting, and throwing people already, not only are they by Australian ballot for an election of officers, now we're doing warnings, articles, I think it's going to be a very confusing year. And even if we wanted to act on this, we weren't going to act until 2023. I would give it one more year for us to research it better, get more opinions. I've gotten some, and there's some that are either way. I realize it's up to the Board's discretion to decide on that, but maybe, and after having a roundtable with Will Sunning and 85 other clerks in town, in the towns, the main focus because of the big changes in our voting system this year is to kind of stay as close as we can to what's important for our articles, what is really very, very important this year, and anything that we don't have to have, let's not have. And I kind of think the same way now.
Yeah, I agree with you, Kim.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's kind of why, at first I was right on board, Bill had it inserted in there, then after I just had this meeting a couple days ago and Bill was gone, it was like, okay, let's just take it off, let's table it maybe to next year.
Yeah, I agree.
That's all I'm doing.
Okay, so those 1, 2, 3 at the very end, just, they're going to go away right now?
They'll go away, if you guys, if that's how you guys feel about it, yes.
No, it makes sense, I agree.
Okay, so Kim, do you need a motion now to accept the articles?
We can't, because I guess Bill's going to look into that last article.
Could we do that?
Can? Oh, okay, you can move to accept them, but not approve them, he said.
Okay. All right, so somebody want a motion to accept them, and then we can deal with the revised ones on Tuesday?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. So the motion is to...
John, so moved, Kathy second then.
Yeah, to accept, to accept the articles as presented? Is that the language?
And to approve them later on, right?
To accept them and approve on the 19th.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Okay. What is your? Okay, so now, Kim, you have another thing about the Walker Bridge.
Yes. Okay, so during the process of finalizing the draft copy of our audit, I brought up to Fred and Jenna, who I was working with, about, we had voted to set $100,000 aside for the Walker Bridge, and that $100,000, that's in a reserve, I put it in a repo, what's called a repurchase agreement. And that repurchase agreement has been gaining interest, and I asked, and depending if the Board is on board with this, to move the interest that that $100,000 accumulates and move it directly into the reserve to go along with what we're saving for the Walker Bridge. So in order for him to have done that, he did do it into the actual draft hard copy, but he's waiting on the approval of what you're going to approve today if you want to move forward and do that. So that would mean there would be a motion to take $2,923 of accrued interest and assign it to the Walker Bridge account. And then, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kathy.
No, I think, no, it sounds good.
Because that motion then would give the authority for him to be able to assign it, that $2,000 of gained interest moved over, that much ahead. So that's your motion.
Mm-hmm.
Makes sense.
Second. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not all in favor of motion?
Who made the motion?
Motion over the second.
Okay, so who made the first motion?
John.
Who said they...
John.
Stan.
Okay.
Who's second?
Kathy, I think.
Kathy.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor of moving the interest to the Walker Bridge account, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Okay. All right, Kim, you got that taken care of.
Well, the next thing is other business.
Other business?
Um, I'm just going to mention, I have other business maybe coming up, once we hear from the legislature whether or not, and this is something for thought for you on come on Tuesday, the 19th. I'll need direction as to whether or not you guys will allow me to send out ballots to every one of our registered voters, like I did at the general. I'm waiting for the governor to sign off on it. It should be by Friday, just tomorrow, that will allow us to do it.
Can we deal with that on Tuesday?
Yep, I'm just asking you to give it some thought before Tuesday night comes.
How does that get funded, Kim?
Well, we found out, again, through this roundtable, through Will Sunning, that we will get reimbursed for any postage for in and outgoing mail on these ballots. A lot of towns are asking to, they're still going to stick to the absentee, send out postcards, and the people, you know, request them, and then they'll send them out. It's easy enough, we're small enough, that it's like our tax bills, I can send them out, and what comes back, comes back, and if they don't, they don't, type of thing. And we had a really good turnout for our general. I think we had like 80-some-odd percent turnout, so I think we'll get quite a few back. But it's something to think about by Tuesday.
So if we don't, if we don't have a direct mail, then the other option would be to send out the postcard, right, and then ask them to request one? Is that the deal?
Yeah, or not even send postcards and just wait for them to request a ballot from me by making a phone call, which, you know, you're talking about filling out postcards, then it's fill out the request forms, and then it's making sure that we do mail out the requested forms, and making sure that they are a registered voter, and yeah. The process was much smoother for us anyways, for the general, than it was for the primary. The primary asked for the requests with the little postcards. The general was just a mass mailing. I felt comfortable doing the mass mailing.
So as I understand it, if we do send out the ballots, the person can still vote in person?
They can, they can just bring that ballot with them. Or we keep track that if they say they lost it, they sign a sheet, and then they go ahead and vote at the booth. So yes, I'm still going to be there from nine to seven.
Hang on one second for me. Honey? Honey, where are you? Hello? Hello? UPS is here, right? Oh, okay. Hey, Stan?
Yeah?
I got to go down to get this UPS guy, so you want to finish up the meeting, whatever they want to do?
Yeah, you don't have anything else, do you?
No, no. Okay, hang on. Kathy?
Yeah?
Can you stay on a minute before, when everybody goes?
Yeah.
All right, I sent you an email, and I want to discuss it with you, okay?
Oh.
Right there.
Okay.
All right, any other, any other business? Public comment? I don't think we have anybody on, do we?
Just Hardy.
Just Hardy's on. Do you want me to get off, Hardy and Nancy?
No, no, just, do you have any?
No, no.
No, we have nothing else.
Okay.
Stan, can I just let Kathy know about the, what we talked about when it came to the audit, those two pages? I just want to fill her in so she's prepared before, because Fred's like first on our list on Tuesday. And I think you got a copy of the draft for the audit. Bill must have sent it to you earlier, and I've got a hard copy for you here also. But if you, one of the main pages is page six, and on the bottom of page six, you're going to see where there's assigned, unassigned, restricted, and committed. And when you see those line items, go to page 26, and it defines those. It's got the categories of what is restricted, and you'll see when he lists what's restricted, those total amounts will revert back to page six. And same thing with the committed and the assigned. And you can make coalition between those two pages. Okay? And that way they are, because they're lumped up. There's usually four or five categories that are lumped up in that one lump sum, and one of the main questions always is, what is that made of? So, okay?
Okay.
I'm back. Did anybody, did everybody get the audited letter?
The letter, right, two?
The one that came today, I think? The one where he's...
The one...
From...
Oh, for Fred?
Yeah, from Fred.
Yeah.
The one that's sent to the Select Board. Okay.
I didn't read them all, but...
No, no, I just wanted, because we have to discuss that on Tuesday.
Right.
Because he had some concerns about fraud, and I talked about it with Kim today. You want to, you want to go over that, Kim, or anything else?
Um, actually, Bill and, we had two, actually, within the hardcover of the audit, there was only one deficiency that he found, and you can see I addressed it on the last page. I had to do it on our letterhead and address the deficiency, and the deficiency happened to have been my journal entries, which is money moving only from like one, one account to the next account, you know, different categorizing it. one account to the next account, you know, different categorizing it, and the reason for it. And typically, I'm to do, before I am to do that, or when I do that, it's to be approved by a Select Board member. I've always had the auditors do it, our inside auditors, but typically, it should be a Select Board member. So, I have since, last week contacted John. He really knows our chart of accounts quite well from the past. If he would come in once a month, and I usually have two, maybe three journal entries now, because everything's going so smoothly, that I can just show him that we received interest in the bank, but I had to put it in the interest account. And that's what it, is all it shows, and he's going to sign off for me. So, that's why the letter is in the back. And then in Fred's letter to the Select Board, not only did he have the journal entry, but the fraud risk assessment. And that is something that Bill has talked with Fred already about, and it's something, Bill, you want to speak on?
Yeah. What we have done is, in addition to the internal controls, which he likes, that we have written, but you have not yet adopted, there is this risk assessment. And we were under the impression that the risk assessment had to be done by a professional. But he tells me, no, that Kim and I and Danny, and maybe one person or two people from the Select Board, can sit around and discuss where we see the weaknesses in possible actions of the people to steal money from us, like us, like the cash transactions, or the checkbook, or paying for licenses in cash, and things like that. And then figure out what those are, and write them up the best we can, and then he will send me a model to put that in. And that's your risk assessment.
And that's also something that's ongoing, so it's not a one-time thing, it's something that we should visit, I'd say periodically, Bill, right? Like at least yearly, if not more. Yeah, so, but that's in the management letter that you guys have gotten, but it's not within the actual audit copy itself. And those are the only two deficiencies. So... And the audit is on the website already, electronic audit. So, if anybody's interested in reviewing our audit, it's there. And also, Bill and I have it available, if, you know, they can't get on the website for any reason. We've got it here also. That's it.
Okay. Since there's no public on here anyway. So, the next, the next board meeting is January 19th, that's a Tuesday, at the normal time, 6 o'clock, because of the holiday. And Bill did send out the final agenda today, I believe, so...
I will send it out.
Yep.
I have two things right now to add to it.
Oh, okay, all right, but then it will go out today?
Yeah, I'll do it in a few minutes.
Okay, fine. So, the agenda that you sent out earlier is now going to be revised again, is that correct?
Yeah, you just added two to this meeting. You just added two to...
Call from West Virginia.
Oh, come on.
Call from West Virginia.
Wait, okay. I guess if there's no other business, somebody make a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.